Good evening, everybody. This welcome to the meeting of the North Andover Zoning Board of Appeals, today, August 11th, 2020. First item on the agenda is to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please. Pledge allegiance to the flag.
States of America. Which is Canada.
God.
Justice for.
All right. Thank you all. The meeting is called to order. We've had the Pledge of Allegiance. I am going. And darn good suggestion that we read. I've got supplemental notice just regarding the COVID and why we're doing things remotely. Everybody, if you would, just bear with me. There are about, I don't know, fifteen or sixteen lines of single-spaced text. It is on the, it's the italicized paragraph on the agenda, and it's also, I think, attached to, if not all of the hearing notices. So I'm just going to read that aloud. Pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12th, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, general laws, Chapter 30A, Section 18, and the governor's July 2nd, 2020 order imposing strict limitation on the number of people that may gather in one place. This meeting of the Town of North Andover Zoning Board of Appeals will be conducted via remote participation to the greatest extent possible. Specific information and the general guidelines for remote participation by members of the public and/or parties with a right and/or requirement to attend this meeting can be found on the Town of North's website, www.northandoverma.gov. Meeting. Public who wish to watch the meeting may do so on their television by Comcast Channel 8 or Verizon Channel 26, or online at www.northandovercam.org. No in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings in real time via technological means. In the event that we are unable to do so despite best efforts, we will post on the Town of North Andover website audio or video recording, transcript, or other comprehensive records of proceedings as soon as possible after the meeting. If public would like to participate in public hearings, please email your question or comment prior to or during the meeting to jbattersby@northandoverma.gov. I'll spell it out for y'all. The letter J, the letter B, A, T is in Tom, E R, S is in Sam, E is in boy Y, at N O R T H A N D O V E R M A dot gov. The question or comment will be read during the proceedings and responded to accordingly. A copy of the application and supporting documents are on file in the Zoning Board of Appeals, 120 Main Street, North Andover, Massachusetts, and may be viewed on the North Andover website at www.northandoverma.gov. So with that notice out of the way, the next item on the agenda is the acceptance of minutes, July 14th, 2020 minutes. Is there, maybe I'll go with, is there any conversation about the minutes? If not, then is there a motion?
Move to accept.
I'll second.
Motion made by whom, please?
Ron Fagan.
Thank you, Ron. Seconded by Alexandria Jacobs. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Hearing none, unanimously accepting the minutes of July 14th. The next item on the agenda is a new public hearing, 20 Fox Hill Road. And Ms. Jacobs, if you would, read the hearing notice, and then we'll carry on.
Legal notice, North Andover Zoning Board of Appeals. Notice is hereby given that the Board of Appeals will hold a public hearing remotely via call on Tuesday, August 11th, 2020, at 7:30 PM to all parties interested in the petition of Michael Scully for property at 20 Fox Hill Road, MAP 37C, Parcel 49, North Andover, MAP 01845, in the R2 zoning district. The applicant is requesting a variance from Section 195-7.3 yard setback, table two-dimensional requirements of the Town of North Andover zoning bylaws for the right-side setback in the R2 zoning district to construct an addition on an existing home. The right-side setback proposed is 16.8 feet. The right-side setback required is 30 feet. The relief variance requested is 13.2 feet. Due to the state-issued emergency order, Town Hall is currently closed. Therefore, the application and supporting materials are available for review via the North Andover's website at www.northandoverma.gov under Document Center. By order of the Board of Appeals, D. Paul Koch Jr., Esquire Chairman. Oh, do you want the legal notice supplement as well?
No, I don't, we don't need to redo that. I have muted myself. I apologize. Otherwise, I would have been far more seamless in interrupting. I'm not good at running meetings, and I'm even less good at running remote meetings. So I am going to, I forget stuff all the time. A couple of announcements that I should have made at the top is, A, this is a remote meeting, obviously, B, it's via telephone, and C, this is being recorded. So I just want to announce to anybody who is participating that this is a recorded meeting. I'm sure it comes as no surprise to some, but it has been suggested to me that we be careful and make that announcement since we are over the telephone line. The next item up for bids is, I will ask everybody to, whoever's on the line, unless you're, it's hard, it's stilted, but if we could mute ourselves when we are not talking or presenting, that would be helpful because with the number of people online, just a little bit of background noise from each of us ends up being awfully distracting. So I'm sure that this might cue along the way, so anybody can jump in and suggest that there be, you know, a group mute above for the person who is actually speaking. I think that ends the things that I overlooked earlier, and so I'm figuratively looking at you, Mr. Johnson. I think you're on the line, correct?
I am, and hopefully sometime soon we could actually meet in person. These meetings are a lot easier in person. When I realized it would be by phone, I did file yesterday, I'm not sure if it was distributed to the board, a very short PowerPoint of certain slides. I'm not sure if that came through.
And I'll speak for myself. Mr. Johnson, I know that I received it, and I did print it. I appreciate the effort.
Okay, thank you. And one of the reasons for doing that is, you'll see the slides are numbered down in the lower right corner. I figured it'd be easier if anybody had questions to be able to refer to a slide number. The project consists of a two-story 16-by-24-foot addition for a family room and master bedroom, and a 16-by-12-foot porch, and a minor improvements to the basement underneath the addition. The current setback is 31.6, and the proposal reduces the site setback to 16.8 to 16.9 feet. When you, if you look at the site plan, which is Slide 3, you'll see that there's a little jut out for a fireplace that's noted on the site plan. When my client was looking to put an addition onto the house, they lived here for a while, and they have a growing family, it looked like there would be two places that an addition could be put on, either the right side or the left side of the house. To put it off the back of the house would require extensive renovations to the kitchen, and just wouldn't have a flow as to what the house would actually flow to live in it. If you look at Slide 6, you'll see the existing house, and the area to the right would be the area where the addition would be going. The left side of the house would be Slide 9, which shows an extensive stone wall. That's the entrance to the garage. It shows the driveway. And in addition, on the left side of the house would also require a variance in the setback requirements as well, very similar to what we're looking at on the right side. My client has spoken to all of the neighbors surrounding him, and I believe the board should have letters from the neighbors. Slide 10 gives you some idea where the neighbors are, and this slide was done before the last letters that came in, which I believe were on the other side of Fox Hill Road from the site. So he has spoken to the neighbors, and I believe he should have, at this point, four letters from the neighbors in the area. The lot itself, as you can see from the site plan, is narrow and juts out back. It makes it difficult for a family that's growing that needs additional room to be able to put on an addition. We believe that this addition is in keeping with the neighborhood, and the fact that the neighbors are in favor of this gives you some idea that they're happy with what it's going to look like. If the board has any questions, we're happy to respond to it, but the package I gave you yesterday gives you some idea as to what the property looks like. Slide 7 is a little closer to the area where the addition would go on.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Johnson. I'll report, certainly speak for myself, that I do have 1, 2, 3, 4 letters that Jen has forwarded, I think, to the group. I printed them. I'll make a little bit more mention of them later, once we get to the public comment period. Until then, however, I think I'm just kind of figuratively, again, looking up and down the table at the board members and asking comments, questions, or concerns from any board members, kind of just chime right in.
I'll start. This is Ron Fagan, and I have no immediate concerns. I think it means a lot to me when you've got your neighbors supporting it, and they believe that it will be of benefit to the neighborhood. So that actually weighs quite a bit of it.
I second Ron on this, in that it's hard for me to be too upset about the change in the variance, or the change in the depth of the house, when every single neighbor pretty much around the area, and one who was across the street, who's a friend of mine, reached out to me today to say, hey, you know, I'm supporting this even though my letter hasn't gotten into the main packet yet. So people seem to be getting, going out of their way to support.
Thank you for that. I think for the last two comments, and perhaps mine, I'll ask everybody to let me know. Hearing a little reverb, folks are talking, that could, we're not collecting, muted. So we'll be as mindful as we can, or perhaps just a technical snap. You both for those comments. I'm looking again up and down the table. Any other questions from the board?
This is Steve Seidi. I made a point of looking at the house live, as well as the material. I think it's very well put together, and I think it would be, it would look very stately as well. So I'm impressed with everything so far.
Thank you. Thank you, Steve. Anybody else?
This is Frank Killway. I guess I just want to repeat what everyone else has said, that I don't see any issues with it. I looked at it in person as well, and it seems like the neighboring houses, even with this addition, the neighboring house still has quite a bit of clearance from the actual, where the addition would be to the other house. So it wouldn't look very crowded. It would look like it fits in properly.
Thank you. Any, anyone else? All right, then we'll move a little public comment. There's nothing extraordinarily ordinary or lengthy in here. We have four letters. I will note that they are from Mary Ellen Ober and Jay Jimenez, and they are at 549 Pleasant, 535 Pleasant. There's a letter from Jason and Robin Michaud. 32 Fox Hill has got William Sullivan and Amanda Sullivan. And 21 Fox Hill, we've got a letter, Pat and Dan O'Neil. So we have four letters here that are supportive of the project. Just want to make note of those for the public record. If there are no more questions percolating from the board members, then I will just ask, perhaps ask the applicant, do you have anything further to add? Otherwise, we can certainly close this part of the hearing and move on to a motion and vote.
I'll be happy to have you move on to a motion and vote, and hopefully on to your next item on the agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. With that in mind, Ms. Jacobs, is there a motion? You may be muted, Ms. Jacobs.
Apologize for that, talking to myself. You want me to make, I will make a motion to close the hearing, close public hearing.
Motion made. Is there a second?
I will second, Ron Fagan.
Thank you, Ron. So motion made by Ms. Jacobs, seconded by Mr. Fagan. We're not going to bother with a roll on this. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Actually, I think you may need to do a roll to comply with the order.
Is that, all right. Then I will go, maybe I've got to go over to, and who is going to be voting on 20 Fox Hill?
Mike and Stephen.
You very much. Then I will go up the roll, starting with Mike.
Aye.
Steve?
Aye.
Ron?
Aye.
Alexandria?
Aye.
And I am an aye, so we will close. First public comment, move to deliberations. Board members, any thoughts that are, I don't know, amplify the obvious comments that we made during the applicant's presentation?
I would just like to commend Steve for his use of the word stately. I thought that was a really nice word.
Thanks for the levity, which kind of rhymes with stately. Anything else from the board? All right. Ms. Jacobs, is there a motion?
All right. Bear with me, guys, because I'm not used to doing this. All right. I make a motion. Paul, help me out here.
Yeah, I think you just make a motion to approve the variance. Just read that center paragraph.
I make a motion to approve the petitioner, Michael Scully, for property located at 20 Fox Hill Road, who requested a variance from Section 195-7.3 yard setback, table two-dimensional requirements of the Town of North Andover zoning bylaws for a right-side setback in the R2 zoning district to construct, in construct an addition onto the existing home. The right-side setback proposed would be 16.8 feet. The right-side setback required is 30 feet, with relief requested of 13.2 feet.
Ms. Jacobs, motion made. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
That was Steve?
Yes.
Thank you, Steve, for the second. I will go the roll once again. Michael?
Aye.
Steve?
Aye.
Ron?
Aye.
Alexandria?
Aye.
And I'm also an obvious aye, so 5-0, the variance is approved. Thank you all.
Thank you very much. Thank you, and have a good evening.
Right back at you.
Thank you very much. Have a good evening now.
Yep. Good night.
The next item on the agenda is 14 Beach Avenue. Do we have the applicant in queue for 14 Beach? Is the applicant present for 14 Beach? Golly, now what?
Mr. Collins, please unmute.
If you're on Google muted, check, right?
I think I have it now, Jen. Can you hear me, Jen?
Yeah, you're on.
All right. This is Ken Collins, 14 Beach Avenue.
Thanks, thanks.
I'm here with my wife, Ian.
Hold on just a second, Mr. Collins. I just wanted to make sure that the applicant, you, were here already. We need to open the public hearing for your property by reading the notice. Ms. Jacobs, would you kindly open for us?
Legal notice for North Andover Zoning Board of Appeals. Notice is hereby given that the Board of Appeals will hold a public hearing remotely via conference call on Tuesday, August 11th, 2020, at 7:30 PM to all parties interested in the petition of Kenneth G. Collins for property at 14 Beach Ave., MAP 033.0, Parcel 044, North Andover, MAP 01845, in the R4 zoning district. The applicant is requesting a variance from Section 195-7.3 feet yard setback, table two-dimensional requirements of the Town of North Andover's zoning bylaws for rear setback in the R4 zoning district to construct a 10-by-12 deck. The rear setback proposed is 22 feet. The rear setback required is 33 feet. The relief variance requested is 8 feet. Due to the state-issued emergency order, Town Hall is currently closed. Therefore, the application and supporting materials are available for review via the Town of North Andover website at www.northandoverma.gov under Document Center. By order of the Board of Appeals, D. Paul Koch Jr., Esquire Chairman.
Thank you very much, Ms. Jacobs. Now, Mr. Collins, thank you for your patience. If you could, once again, just introduce yourself, and then the floor is.
Okay. I, Ken Collins, and I'm here with my wife, Ian. We're at 14 Beach Avenue.
Brilliant, thank you. Why don't you tell us, tell us what's going on with your application?
We're seeking relief of 8 feet due that the rear setback of 30 feet cannot be complied in order to construct a 10-by-12 deck. So the deck would extend 22 feet of a rear setback.
Well, we've certainly seen decks before, so I appreciate, appreciate the brevity of your presentation and the relative completeness of your application. Are there any questions from the, from the board on this?
Yeah, this is Ron Fagan. I have a question, just as I said about the other one, where it meant a great deal to me that the, a Butters weighed in positively. I don't see anything here about a Butters weighing in either positively or negatively. Did I miss something, or is it possible, or, you know, what have you said, what have you talked to with the Butters?
Is that question for me? I spoke with a couple of the Butters verbally, had no opposition to this. I would trust that anybody who had any comments that needed to have the board hear them would compose a letter or some type of a comment, and I don't know that anything has been said.
Fair question, Ron. Fair comment. Mr. Collins, I'll ask, Jen, we're not necessarily going to get to that portion of it, but since the question is before us, have you received anything from any Butters regarding this file?
No, I haven't.
Thank you very much. How about anything, anything generally? Any comments that are not necessarily Butters? Has anything come in?
No, I don't have any comments at all.
Good, thank, thank you for, for that. Ron, and anything else?
No, that was the only issue I had.
Thank you. Again, looking up and down the table at the board members, questions, concerns from anybody?
On the, on the plan, it shows a setback of 20 feet.
From the existing deck, I mean, from the proposed deck, right?
Proposed.
Right.
But I thought in the application it said 22 feet.
Well, that was the original thought, because I, I thought that the house was actually 30, 33 feet from the property line, when it turned out, you know, it was shown to me by Paul Hudsonson's, that it was actually 35. So the deck would only encroach by 8 feet, not a full 10.
Okay, so the actual variance that you need, then, is 22 and not 20?
22.
The actual setback you have is 22 and not 20?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. If you have the plot plan in front of you, you may see a 33 dimension on the rear set, and that goes to the chimney set out that's next to where the deck would go. The foundation is actually 2 feet further away, if I'm making myself clear.
So it's 35 feet, is what you're saying?
35 feet is the house setback as it sits right now, yes.
And the existing deck is 3 feet?
There is, it's more of a porch for egress, and yes, it is 3 feet.
So it's 35 minus 13 would be 22 feet, so.
So then the notice, the notice and the application are correct, but am I understanding that the plot plan that we have in front of us would be showing a 22, 22 feet from lot line to deck, rather than 20 feet from lot line to deck? Is that correct?
Yes, it is, it should show 22. I actually drew up that plan on the original plot plan, and I made the assumption that we were going for a 20-foot remainder to be for the setback, when, as I said, Paul corrected me and said, no, it would be 20, because, 22, because of the fact that the dimension was off the chimney, not off the foundation.
Anything else from the board? All right. I'm not hearing anything else from the board, therefore, I might be, you know, a little bit of, I'm not sure how to handle this, because if we make a motion to approve this, the notice is certainly fine, but we can't make a motion that says kind of in accordance with the submitted. So perhaps we'll need to make a condition that the applicant submit a corrected plan to Jen in the next couple of days in order to kind of dot that i or cross that t. And any thoughts from the board managing?
It sounds like a good approach.
That's reasonable, I think.
I mean, I don't think that this is a major enough project to feel like we have to wait on a decision until the next meeting. I feel like that's probably overkill for this, so that seems like a reasonable condition.
Great. Thank you for the feedback, folks. Anybody else? All right. Looking up and down the table, then pass, pass the thoughts on that logistical matter. Anything else for the applicant on the substance of the application?
No, except I'm, I'm just clarifying what you're requesting is that the drawing actually revealed the 22 feet rather than 20. Is that correct?
What I, what I would be looking for is, I think that there are two drawings with the application materials. There's the plot plan, and then there is some graph paper.
Right, right. I have both of them in front of me.
My suggestion is going to be that you mark those, because I can't mark them for you, unfortunately. If you would mark those with the appropriate dimension in the back there, so, or I think, where, if I'm understanding things correctly, the 20, the 20-foot line from the, from the rear lot line to the deck should act, get 22, is that correct?
That is correct.
So if you would mark the plot plan, the blue one that we have in front of us, so that it reflects a 22-foot line, and then if you would mark the graph paper, plan, and if you would return those to Jen, we can have the record more completely and accurately supplemented.
Okay. And, and when would you act on it, once that is achieved?
Well, the goal is to act on it tonight, and then to make as a condition of the decision that you submit those corrected plans to Jen.
Okay, that's fine.
Great.
That's fine.
Is there anything else from the board on the matter?
Paul, what's the timeframe? We're looking to get the corrected plot plan and graph drawing.
I would say in the next couple, couple few days would be my hope, because our clock is ticking to get a decision out the door, so I would hate, hate to. So, I would hate to have the applicant, you know, wait 12. I'm not suggesting that he would, but we don't want the applicant to wait too long because then we don't get a decision out timely. So, I would ask if we get, when we get to motion and offering conditions, we can certainly talk more, but I would hope that it would be just a couple or a few days at the most.
Okay, well, I'll chime in and just say that I'm probably not going to be able to do that until Monday or Tuesday next week. Would that be soon enough?
I'm sure that'll be fine for my purposes.
Okay, thank you.
As a logistical matter, Jen, is that offering any particular hurdles for you or is that entirely workable?
That's workable.
Thank you. Anything else from the Board or shall we move to close public comment? If there's a motion, go ahead and yell it on out.
I'll make a motion to close public comment.
I'll second.
Motion made by Alexandria, motion seconded by... I missed it.
You never get it, Fagan.
Ron, thank you.
I'm going to talk like this, so you get it.
I'm going to have to ask, "Hey, Jen, how are we sharing this vote?"
Sorry, Mike and Steve.
Mike and Steve, thank you very much. So, most public comment is made and seconded going up the roll. Michael?
Aye.
Steve?
Aye.
Ron?
Aye.
Alexandria?
Aye.
I'm an aye, so we'll make that unanimous. Public comment closed. The Board shall deliberate if that be its will. Any thoughts from the Board members?
Yeah, so I'll start. This is Ron, and this one gives me more pause than the other one does for exactly the same reason I mentioned in the question, and that is the lack of input from the abutters. And, you know, you can argue one way that says that it's incumbent upon the abutters to know this is going on and respond. On the other hand, I can understand why that may not happen as it's, you know, vacation time of year maybe. I am concerned about this going on without any approval from the folks directly surrounding the project.
Alexandria will chime in on this. If you... I'm not seeing a concern on there not being any support or negativity to it. Primarily, if you're looking at the third color photo that was provided, it appears that the deck is going to be the same height as what's existingly there. So, yes, you're adding more space for the petitioner to be able to use a deck, but I don't really see how that would interfere any more so with any of the abutters.
I have a question. So, it appears, because it's in the backyard, I couldn't see, but it looks as though the yard, the backyard is fenced in. Is that correct?
It appears to be fenced. It appears to be fenced because there is a pool. The rear abutter appears to have a pool directly behind the applicant's home.
Okay, and so the fence, to me, appears to be... I'm going to say aesthetically, it is not. If someone had... The fence neutralizes what someone does in their backyard is my opinion on this one, so...
Understood. Any other comments from the Board members? All right, seeing and...
No, one question, Paul, to pass. How many votes do you need to pass?
We need four.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I guess my one concern here is that, like, this is not an unusually sized lot, and so, you know, there isn't a sense that, like, this is a special case in any way. This is just somebody who wants to do something that is outside of the zoning rather than a situation where, like, they have an oddly sized lot that just doesn't allow for normal house building behavior.
So, said differently, you're questioning the hardship, Mike?
Yeah, I think so.
Any thoughts from the Board on that?
Well, just an observation, and I don't... I'm going to ask, have this validated, but I believe the lot size is smaller than what the bylaws would have for lot sizes. So, I think we're dealing with a smaller lot to begin with. Is that correct? Could someone clarify that for me? Because it's a little over. It's 10,000 square feet.
You... We need clarification on that, certainly.
That is correct. I'm looking at the plan. It's actually on the blue colored diagram. On the bottom left corner, there's a zoning table, and it points out that the lot area required is 12,500 and the existing is 10,000.
So, I think, to me, that he has a hardship there because his lot size is small to begin with. So, I just wanted to add that.
That is certainly a fair angle to take if it were. The trouble is that hardship, generally speaking, is based on soil shape or topography, and size is specifically not something that qualifies for hardship grounds. Any other thoughts from the Board? All right, seeing and hearing none, shall we close? Actually, those words deliberation. So, seeing and hearing no further comments, please chime in if you got them. Then shall there be a motion?
You want to make a deliberation? Paul, have you asked a motion to close deliberation?
Didn't... I thought we... Didn't we just close? We closed public comment, did we? I thought we did. I could...
Yeah, but are you asking to close deliberation now?
I don't think we have to close.
You were just looking for the motion for the variance.
Yeah, precisely. And I think Ms. Jacobs was preparing to read a motion.
If there's nothing further.
Seeing and hearing none, I think the floor is yours, Ms. Jacobs.
Motion made to grant the variance to Kenneth G. Collins for property at 14 Beach Ave., MAP 033.0, parcel 044, North Andover map 01845 in the R4 zoning district. The applicant is requesting a variance from Section 195-7.3C. Yard setback, Table 2, dimensional requirements of the Town of North Andover zoning bylaws for rear setback in the R4 zoning district to construct a 10 by 12 deck. The rear setback proposed is 22 feet. The rear setback required is 30 feet. The relief variance requested is 8 feet with the condition that a corrected plot plan and graph drawing is provided to the Town of North Andover zoning board stating a 22-foot rear setback by August 18, 2020.
Thank you, Ms. Jacobs. Motion made, is there a second?
I'll second.
Oh, boy, that wasn't... Was that... Who was that?
That was Mike.
Hi, Mike, sorry about that. Motion made by Ms. Jacobs, seconded by Mike. Mike, and now we'll call the roll. Mike, you're first.
Aye.
Steve?
Aye.
Ron?
Aye.
Alexandria?
Aye.
And I am an aye, so 5-0, the variance is approved. Thank you very much to the Board. Thank you very much, Mr. Collins.
Thank you.
All right, looking at the agenda, there's one more item, and I think Jen circulated our binder. Take a look at the new application for variance. I know we've kicked this around a little bit over the last couple of months. Maybe we can finish it up. Just as a reminder, just because we're talking about this in an open session, just because we may be taking an advisory vote on this in open session does not mean that we are locked into this thing. If we need to make adjustments to it, you know, the day after we vote, for crying out loud, or the month after we determine that this application needs some adjustment or is not working, that's certainly something we can do, both at the open meeting of the Board level, and I'm sure we can even do it at the administrative level without troubling agenda. So, with all of that said, have folks taken another look at the draft new application or rejiggering or recompletion of the petition?
Yeah, I have, but can I ask... This is Ron, before we start. What was the genesis of this?
The genesis of this comes from me. I'll own that quite completely. The genesis for me is that the application that we currently have is... There's, you know, name, date, address, serial number. All that stuff is kind of in there. Feels that there are areas of it that are confusing to me, but there are areas of any application that are confusing to me. But more importantly, to me, as a Board member these past years, is many applicants just end up filling in the blanks, and we don't get a complete set of information or ideas or anything like that because buried in the four-page application that we currently have are two pages of instructions. And the instructions make a whole host of important announcements and announce a few requirements, not the least of which, as we have discovered over time and as I think was highlighted this evening, is the current application does not even have a line for articulating hardship, which is one of the reasons why the Board continuously... One of the reasons why I, myself, as a member of the Board, continuously wonder why we're here. Why are we doing this if we're not paying attention to soil shape topography? And there are a couple of other things in there, but those are the three biggies. So, I, several years ago, converted the PDF that we had into a Word doc and started making adjustments all over the place. And I had cried the blues to Eric, and I've cried the blues to other folks at Town Hall, but I haven't been able to get traction because I've got to champion it, and I just don't have the time to champion even a small initiative like this. So, when we had some turnover in economic development and planning, and I had to talk to some of the folks, you know, and in particular Suzanne, the bull was taken by the horns, and the Department put together a more... What we see in front of us, kind of mostly on their own initiative. Did I ask them directly for it? No. Did I tell them that it's something that I really wanted to see happen, not just for a variance but for the special permit as well? So, this is just kind of a trial run. And this is the result of that effort. But that may be more information than you were looking for, but this comes from me and my dissatisfaction with the legacy application that we've been using.
Okay, no, thank you for that. But if I then netted out, would it be fair to say what you're really saying is you'd like more narrative in the application to get a better feel for what the issue is? What the place is?
I think that is a fair characterization, and we get that from the folks that come before us routinely. I mean, we saw the, you know, Mr. Johnson's application tonight. His firm has been before us a number of times. There are other firms and other attorneys that have been before us a number of times, and they will submit to us, you know, the six or seven-page memorandum in support of the application, which contains a lot of the details that are helpful to me in advance of the hearing. Yeah, we can ask at the hearing, but it's not the same as seeing it in front of me before the hearing, digesting it, and then perhaps having the opportunity to ask questions or to get a second exposure at the hearing itself. So, in my mind, there is some leading of the applicants because we don't always get professional applicants before us who may have the support, a form of a supporting memo, you know, on their desktop computer at home. So, by expanding, by getting things out of the list of instructions of the old form and putting them in later pages here with kind of some fill-in-the-blank elements, then even the more common applicants will be able to provide us with the information that I think we're looking for proactively rather than being surprised when they get to the hearing and we say, you know, "What's your hardship?" We hear all the time, "Oh, what does that mean?" And they're trying to make something up on the fly. This application at a minimum says, you know, "What's the hardship?"
Yeah, and so, to echo some of those, I thank you for explaining your thoughts behind this. You know, when we get an application, I typically... The first thing I do is I don't look at the application itself. I go and try to look at the diagrams because that tells me more and more quickly than the text of the application often does. So, I'll often look at the diagrams and then come back to the application. But when this was sent out, I looked at it, and I was like, "Oh, like, this is actually asking us to tell a story when someone submits an application." And so, that's... So, I think in that regard, it definitely does move the needle in that direction.
Yeah, thank you for the synopsis. I agree with that, and I appreciate it in that way. Different perspective heading in the same direction, by the way. I wasn't trying to be cute there.
Yeah, so I'll make a couple of comments. The first is, of course, it does put the burden on people to write neatly. And, you know, I know some of these things I have trouble deciphering handwriting, and now we've got a lot more of it. So, but that's fine. That's, you know, theirs to deal with, not mine. I'm going to make a comment which is going to belie my senior citizen status here. I have an issue with people changing user interfaces for me without really good reason because I constantly have to retrain myself to do things that I already knew how to do. And so, when I looked at this, I said, "Okay, I see there's more narrative." The question that I wrote down, though, was, given that we usually get the narrative from the applicants, was there enough of a beneficial change here to require me to retrain myself on how to go through these forms and understand the issues in front of me? And that's the only question I have. And again, it's a little bit embarrassing for me to say that because, you know, people say, "You can obviously retrain yourself to do this," and I can't. But that's my kind of one comment going through is, is there enough of a beneficial change?
So, what that... The way that that resonates for me, Ron, is that I am, you know, entirely similar to you. And the example that I like to use is software. There's no reason for them to have changed Adobe Acrobat yet three times in the last three years I've got to retrain myself. And there is literally no benefit. They've just hidden the features under a different fancy, you know... I don't even know what they're called. A different button, you know, it's green instead of blue now. It's got a little bit more design. I don't find any more functionality in the software. I want to be able to... I just want to be able to use the darn thing, and I can't because I've got to, like you pointed out, I've got to think... Now, I've got to take hours of hours out of my life in order to figure out where do I find OCR in Adobe now? So, I aligned with that concept, and I agree with that concept. And I like to try to live that concept. With that in mind, the application that we've had for a number of years has been dissatisfactory to me for those number of years. So, I'm kind of... And since I was behind the genesis of it, I've adjusted myself to the fact that I'm going to need to be retrained, as unattractive as that may be. And so, what, for me, what's the upside to being trained? To needing to retrain myself? And the upside for me, again, this is a hope because you never know how something is going to behave until it goes live. My hope is that this is going to... My hope is that this is gonna help me, help the applicants tell the story without waiting for the hearing and us getting our first exposure to the story with an applicant before us. I'd like to hear, I'd like to see it and read it before the hearing and then at the hearing, be able to probe the applicant and perhaps ask critical questions of an applicant. Because I've had more than one exposure, rather than at the hearing, get the story for the first time and then have to think about, you know, critical questions, critical thoughts. Trying to get to the bottom of matters. So is, is it worth it? You know, in my mind, again, I've adjusted, so I, I, I feel like it's gonna be, was it gonna be a pain in the neck? Yes. And is it gonna be worth it? Golly, fingers crossed, I hope so.
So Ron and Paul, this, this suggestion may be your, your absolute nightmare, so, so feel free to shut it down. But if we are going to change the format already, um, you, Ron, you, you did, you mentioned the problems of handwriting, which I often struggle with, with a lot of these applications. And would it make sense for us to be pushing for a digital form that people fill out online? Rather than something that they have to print out right by hand and then mail in or hand in?
So would be my good, excellent, excellent point, thank you. And hopefully everybody has, you know, software at home for which they could populate this field. But my dream scenario, Mike, is that, so this is currently a Word document, that it can be converted into a PDF with fields for filling out. Do I know how to do that? Nope. But I gotta have, I've got to believe that there is somebody in the hall that knows how to convert, you know, this, this document into a PDF with fields that have-
Okay, yeah, because that, that would be, that would kind of be ideal because then you get to keep all of your formatting. And so whether someone fills it out by hand or digitally, it'll at least be in the same shape and you look in the same places for the same information.
Yeah, that's, that's a sensible comment, absolutely.
I have a question about it. This is Frank. Didn't some number of months ago, we eliminate the requirement for my law?
Yeah, is that in here still?
Yeah. We'll get rid of it here now.
So great, great catch comment. Thank you, Frank.
It's in, uh, nine, nine B, two.
So I, I, my, my, my expectation for how that happened is that there was, uh, you know, just a, just kind of a word-for-word conversion of the document without, without, um-
Yeah, that's what it looks like and they just, just added the, uh, other items that you had just, you know, described, so it's understandable.
Thank you, thank you for the catch and that's one of the, one of the reasons why it's so important, I, in my mind, so important to throw this thing out there in front of folks. Because there, if we've got eight sets of eyes on something, it's way better than two or four. Any, any, anything else? And again, I, I don't think we necessarily need to take, take a vote on it. We can. If it's the, you know, if it's the, the will of the board to show their, I don't know, collective support or dissatisfaction with the initiative.
Just to weigh in with my thoughts on this, I mean, I, I'm, I'm all in favor of what, what I'll call a continuous improvement process. And I heard Paul say that this is something that it's dynamic. I mean, it, it, it's not a one and done in that it, it can be adjusted. So I, I think that the making the application is meaningful to us and to the applicants is where our focus should be. And, and that should be the primary focus of this. So I'm all in favor of, of, um, you know, continuing to improve the process.
Yeah, and so I, I will, I will, you know, just make a comment that says I obviously don't want to be the guy that stands in the way of progress. And, you know, Paul, you, you've been cogitating on this for a good number of years and so, you know, that does carry also a lot of weight. I guess, you know, as you say, we won't know till we try and it is a, a different approach to kind of breathe a little more life into this. So I would say, yeah, let's, let's give it a try. As you say, it's, you know, it, it's not coming down from outside like carved into stone. So we can, we can try it and see if it works or see if it needs to be adjusted. Um, and thank you so much for your rant on software. That is exactly what I was thinking of when I said in my comments.
Ms. Jacobs, you've been awfully quiet on this.
Um, I don't, I mean, I think providing the spacing, allowing for them to provide more information is definitely more helpful. I think, like you have said, not seeing it for the first time in the meeting, this also allows for, I know a lot of us will drive by, you know, an app, an applicant's property and see kind of what they're looking at doing. And this, I think, will allow us another way of looking at the property and what it is they're wanting to do. So I mean, I think it's helpful. I think wanting to be able to have it as a PDF for a fill-in field is great. But I also don't think at any point in time in the future, we should make that a requirement because I think there are plenty of people who are not as technological savvy as some of us. And it is very hard to keep an old dog new tricks.
Amen. Anything else from the board?
Uh, shall we, shall we bother with a, a symbolic vote to try this, um, try the new application?
Sure.
Then let's get that symbolic motion out there.
All right, well I-
I will make-
Go ahead, Alex, how you doing?
I will make a motion to accept the new zoning bylaw application.
I will second.
Motion made by Ms. Jacobs, seconded by, that was you, Ron, right?
That was.
All right, well, you know what, let's do, uh, let's do everybody, um, since it's mostly symbolic, uh, starting Frank.
Aye.
Steve?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Ron?
Aye.
Alexandria?
Aye.
I'm an aye, so we will have that, the motion carries and we will push this to the powers that be in town hall. Would that, that is the last item on the agenda, so perhaps there should be a motion to adjourn from some hero on the, on the board.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I hear Mike make it.
I'll take it, Mike.
At the same time I did, so.
All right, well-
I'll give it to him.
Alexandria's got a lot of motions. Mike has made it, Alexandria has seconded, all in favor. Roll, don't I apologize, folks. We'll do the whole roll. Frank?
Aye.
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 Ron?
Aye.
Andrea?
Aye.
I am an aye, so we are unanimously adjourned. Thank you, everybody, for putting up with this remote meeting stuff. I appreciate your, your time and patience for this.
I'm liking it.
I am too. I, I think this works out pretty well.
See, we got two votes to keep this.
Hey, Paul, you do, you do a nice job, Paul, so hang in there. Do your good work.
Appreciate your unconditional support, but I know when I'm being snowed.
Oh, I'd like a version of this where we all, uh, are all on video chat so we can at least like look at each other, but.
I'd like that too. I think for the Board of Selectmen and the committee though, us lowly other judicial boards, we get the-
Well, I mean, we have a Google Meet link here and like I can turn on my video right now.
No one needs to see me in my pajamas.
I was gonna say, I did not dress for this meeting.
We should, we should probably-
I don't know if any of us did.
Since we've adjourned, we should probably zap off the hook, everybody.
All right, so on.
See you next month.